Pushing?
I'll get it figured out.
Oh?
It's got to push it in.
Okay.
N equals recording. The turn is to shut it off. You're good to go.
Thank you for the training. I can be a little slow.
No, it's all right. You're getting it down.
Go ahead and call the meeting to order. Thank you, everyone, for coming this evening. First item on the agenda is review and approval of the minutes from the prior meeting unless anybody's got any additions or corrections they'd like to share. I would look for a motion to approve the minutes, please.
I'll make that motion.
A motion to approve. Do we have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Takes care of the minutes. Two public hearings tonight. The first is on a conditional use permit for fill in a flood fringe.
Yeah, so if you take a look in your packet here, and we've got Laura to help talk about it a little bit tonight. Thanks for being here, Laura. But it's got a good overhead shot of this, and in her report, she kind of details what we're looking at, which is an industrial area, looking to fill in some of the, basically the flood fringe in order to, I guess in the future, create a building or allow for a building and parking lot. You know, we've talked about it quite a bit. It's an area where we have some street connection issues, which we'll have to talk through, too. You know, it's actually just kind of right out here as you go north on the road here, the industrial park road, and it doesn't necessarily line up very well right now, but that's basically what we're here to talk about, and it's going to require that conditional use permit. So Laura, I don't know if you want to detail anything else then?
Sure. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So before you use the application for the conditional use permit, within the flood fringe overlay district, which is the 100-year floodplain, in order to fill more than 1,000 cubic feet, yards? One of those. It does require a conditional use permit, and the applicant is proposing, as Tim had said, right now, just the filling portion of building up the site so that in the future the site will be ready for future development when that comes along, so that there'll be a buildable pad site. Right now, on the site plan, they have shown a kind of general 6,000-square-foot facility, a parking area, as well as some additional area. There's no proposed use with this conditional use permit, and as such, we've informed the applicant, and as part of our conditions this evening, that they will have to go through a site plan review at any point before they can have a building permit to start development. But this would essentially allow them to grade and bring everything up so that they can just get going when that gets started. As Tim mentioned, there are a few items related to the site that we are looking into, but not necessarily, not necessarily going to be tied to this conditional use permit. The first is, there's a right-of-way access issue of the southern 33rd feet of the plat was never dedicated during the plating process for this parcel, as well as two parcels to the east. We are going to make a, we are working with all of the landowners in the area, pulling to, the city is pulling together the documentation necessarily to actually correct all of this, and we would make a conditional, condition of approval for this property to dedicate the right-of-way, but we don't want to hold up this property for the dedication of the other two. So, but it shouldn't be an issue. There's a road on there. It's not contested. There's already, I believe, also driveway easement, or private driveway easement in lieu of the right-of-way, that, all of that we're going to work through with the landowners in the area. Some other items, our engineer looked over the grading for the site, and his comments are in the response. Our comprehensive plan does show this area as, currently it's all within the floodplain. It shows it as open space. And the way that our comprehensive plan is written, it allows for essentially wanting to preserve the floodplain and maintain that the floodplain is maintained and built in a way that, or, excuse me, built around that allows for the, during a flood event, free flow of water, as well as protecting the land uses around it. We feel that this, the way that the comp plan is worded, that this application fulfills the intent of that by bringing this buildable area outside of the floodplain, and will not trigger a need for, or, excuse me, a comprehensive plan amendment. However, if in the future that's something that the applicant wants to pursue, the city can help facilitate that.
One other thing to add to that, Laura, too, is if you look on page four in the package, you can see along the north side of that lot, part of the discussion was that trail dedication, because while we may not necessarily keep the uses open, I think the preservation of that along the creek is something that was intended, you know, as this process has started, and in fact, the city acquired property in the, one of these lots along, several of these lots along the creek to sort of support that, as well as putting some stormwater retainage in. But you can see that there, and I think that's part of what we're looking at as well, so.
Yeah, thank you, Tim. In addition, or to kind of piggyback off of that, the applicant has shown the trail easement within the floodway as a recommendation of a condition. Staff recommend that the, the trail easement be shown outside of the floodway, only because when the city comes to grade that area, any grading and fill that is done within the floodway has, that volume has to be made up elsewhere, and so if we're outside of the floodway itself, it just makes grading easier. Another comment from the city engineer was that that right-of-way should be shown as 20 feet wide rather than 10 feet wide. And so those are elements for your consideration this evening, and obviously, public comment, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Laura? If not, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. If anyone has anything they'd like to share, if they'd be kind enough to come up to the podium and give us your name and address, please. If not, I'll go, did you have something, sir?
No.
No, if not, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Gentlemen, your thoughts?
Well, if you want, we can go through the recommendations, you know, if that helps. I don't just sort of stimulate the conversation. If there's any questions about each of, any of the bullet points there, you know, sort of starting on page nine, you can see that we're looking at that dedication, which we definitely think is important. Right now, there, there isn't really, technically speaking, access to snowplows and things like that. It's, was, apparently, back in 2000, they just sort of must have missed it or whatnot, and who knows what happened exactly, but. And then, you know, bullet point two there, there's a number of items showing the trail easement, so the trail itself would not be 20 feet wide, of course, but the easement typically is, allows for land on both sides of the trail. So, you know, there's maintenance and that sort of thing that allows for that. And then, you could see that the utility easements would have to be, would be, have to be met, you know, for water and sewer in the southwest part, because we would want to loop that water main through, coming through the street up here, up through there, provides us a little bit more duplica, dication of the, you know, reinforces our water system, and then all the other points there in terms of aggregate servicing and things like that. So those are really the items that you, if you have questions with. Like Laura said, I don't think we, we found any real conflict with the comprehensive plan with some of those additions to what we're looking at.
Is there enough room for a trail easement outside of the flood fringe and his proposed structure? I don't, I keep trying to see where a legend is to get an idea of size.
So, I apologize. On the screen here, the floodway kind of cuts diagonally across the northern portion of the site, and the trail easement follows that. Right now, it's shown as 10 feet. Ideally, we would want to see double that width, starting at the edge of, on the flood fringe side, rather than the floodway side.
This building's way over here.
I mean, I think there is space to put it in. It's just a matter of if they'd have to, I mean, you'd probably lose a little bit more on the north side of that along the creek. You'd have to move it, you'd just have to move it a little further south. And I mean, that, that property that, to the west is Mr. Musov, I think Ronald Musov, he's got property that extends on both sides of the, north and south of the creek, and I think we would probably be looking at trying to just continue that dedication through his property as well, because there, I'm not sure how much of that's going to realistically be usable. You know, he doesn't have the property that's up on the flood fringe at all, really, so.
Well, kind of on that, too, Dwayne, even if we make it 20 feet, and their proposed building is this, when they come and apply for the permit, and you can still say, you know, they'll know if it fits then, too. They can change the size of the building, per se, if it doesn't, but it looks like there's adequate room here.
Yeah.
So it really shouldn't matter.
Or, Mike, have you seen all of these points?
Yeah, I have. Do you have a bit of a concern with the 20-foot all coming off of that particular side? It'd be nice if it was split along that line, but it's not a total deal breaker. Probably my biggest issue is going to be the point about, you know, the water main easement through property that's not mine, making this contingent on, making this CUP contingent on that to be, I don't own that property. So it's bringing a third party in. I mean, I realize that we're, we're related and know each other well, but that doesn't...
Yeah.
Not that all these are done.
And to that point, that item is 3A on the conditions that we listed, and intentionally put that, we think that, we know that any actual water usage on that, that site is going to need that connection, so we don't want to hold up the CUP here, but any future building or development would need that water main connection, and so we do want to work with Mr. Marty as well as...
There is a water main connection there now.
Right. But it, there's a need for a water loop, which I don't quite understand all the details, not being an engineer, but at some point, we need to, the city needs to work with yourself as well as other Mr. Marty to figure out what that connection is going to look like.
Everybody's happy? I guess I will look for a motion, please.
I will make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That would be our recommendation to the city council.
Very good. We'll have that in the packet for Wednesday's meeting. Right?
Yes. It'll be on Wednesday.
Next public hearing this evening, our fence ordinance update.
Well, it sounds like you guys had a good conversation last month about fences, and, you know, you got it all figured out while I was gone, so I will just let you take charge of this one, Laura.
Well, in your packet, I believe, the adapted version of what we talked about last time is before you, and I don't know if there's any, if we need to highlight any of the changes that we all went through, but I'm happy to answer any questions on how we got to the language that we did.
Maybe just run through some of those big, top-line things, just for the record.
Sure. Yes, yeah. So, kind of the overarching changes that we facilitated on this were establishing a, for properties that are looking to build a fence on a property line, that that would now require a conditional use permit. Otherwise, fences will continue to not need permitting approval. However, if they are in violation of the fence ordinance, or the ordinance part of the zoning ordinance, the city has the capacity to move forward with enforcement in that regard. There's also a change in language regarding front, fences within the front yard. Previously, the height, I believe, had been set at 30, 30 inches, and that has been changed now that any fence, I believe we've upped it to 36 inches, so that three-foot height would be allowed, and then a fence up to six feet would be allowed if it hasn't, if it is opaque, or, excuse me, transparent, I always get the two confused, as long as it, you can see through it more than 50%. And that is to accommodate some differences in needs of fencing materials. I believe that's the overarching.
Yep. Any questions?
I was just gonna say, you just had the one there, too, about three feet from the property line, needs a conditional use permit, if you want it on the property line.
Right. I think she...
Yes, yes, sorry. Three feet or closer to the property line will trigger a conditional use permit, and as part of that would need an access agreement with the neighboring properties that they maintain it.
This number nine about requiring a certificate of survey, that's going to come up with, from a conditional use permit, I assume, or, I suppose if you're three feet away, you're assuming you're three feet away from a assumed property line, but that basically is going to come into play if there's a dispute between neighbors on where this property line's going to be, and that's really what's going to trigger it, not a city official just saying, "Well, you need to bring me a certificate of survey."
Yeah, I mean, I still would expect this to be more, for us, our enforcement would be mostly in the face of complaints. You know, it'll be if somebody comes in and they don't follow the rules, or a neighbor doesn't think they follow the rules, that will. I mean, as I said, it's not going to necessarily solve all fences. Some people are going to put fences up still before they, and they're not going to clear it with us, but if we have a neighbor that does complain, there's at least some teeth to it, and, I mean, we always tell folks, whenever they're putting up anything, that, you know, the GIS the county has is not 100% accurate, and if they, they really want something 100% accurate, they need to get a survey, because, you know, we don't make any guarantees about it, and, and even the pins that they may find, if it's an older part of town, or, you know, if it's a newer part of town, I guess, those aren't necessarily accurate either. But, but yeah, I mean, that's probably where, and those aren't cheap, you know, they can be expensive, so we know that's probably going to be the biggest thing, but it just means that somebody needs to run through the process, and if they do this, and they want to have a, you know, conditional use permit, their neighbor's going to get a letter in the mail that says that they are going through this process, and I think the goal was always for the notification would eliminate a lot of the issues after the fact.
As part of this as well, in addition to the actual ordinance changes, we were looking at working with Linda on kind of creating a handout for folks, especially if people have just moved in, if they have questions on fences, that lays out what the rules are and when certain things are triggered or not, and hopefully, even just having a little bit of information upfront can help some people become more proactive in that regard.
And it's something we can either email to anybody that calls, or hand over the counter to anybody that comes in, and anybody who inquires about a fence will just get one of these. So then there's no, he said, she said, this is what it is.
I mean, think realistically, we'll probably notify, we'll probably put in a newsletter and things like that, too, with the change.
Yes, we'll do that, too.
I'm sure we'll get plenty of comments if we put it on Facebook or something like that, so, as we always do, whenever anything happens in the city, so.
So if it's three feet or more from the property line, no permit is needed?
That's right.
Within the three-feet conditional use permit process, right? Okay.
The conditional use permit process is how long?
Is how long?
Yeah. How long does one take if somebody came in today and said, "I want to put a fence up"? Is that a 60-day process, or is it a...
No, we have to publish for two weeks, and then... Typically, you'd have it at your next planning in the morning, as long as that meets that publication deadline.
All depends on when they came in during the month.
No, and I understand that, but I'm saying...
So, yeah, if they came in, if they came in tomorrow, we would, we wouldn't deal with it until the September meeting.
It would be six weeks before they...
Could be, yeah, potentially.
That should just be, not here, but in the newsletter or whatever.
Mentioned in the...
Mentioned somewhere, just to cover yourself, because, you know, I mean, six weeks from now, somebody's trying to put up a fence, you know.
Well, I think one thing we'll do, too, is probably let home builders know, you know, I mean, that, that's probably the easiest way to communicate it, too, to folks that may be putting fences in right away. I mean, I know in my neighborhood, they've, it's a newer neighborhood, and, I mean, a lot of fences gone up in the last year, you know, so.
Because you probably told them all that we're going to change it. Make it expensive.
Well, if the fences make good neighbors sometimes, I'm not sure, you know, especially if they've got big dogs, I don't know.
And I think that the part about permits not being required, that's, we're talking about zoning permit, not a building permit.
Right.
Because the restrictions of building code, with reference to fence height, you know, if they're over, I think it's six feet, then the permit's required from the building permit standpoint.
I don't want to complicate, but if there was, if the neighbor already has their fence up to the property line, would that be a condition that would allow somebody else to attach to their fence, or have to go through the conditional use permit?
Have to go through the conditional.
Yeah, I'm just saying, trying to say that, I mean, if it's already established and it's been there, and you're forcing somebody to go through this process, you know, the CUP process.
If you're arguing with your neighbor about the placement of the property line, then...
No, if you, if you, if, if the fence is there, and you say, "I want to attach my fence to your fence," you cannot unless you have a conditional use.
Right.
So you're going to have to wait six weeks to put up that fence, even though your neighbor has their property line, their fence already on there.
If your neighbor complains about the fact that you're putting a fence up.
No, you can't attach to their fence.
You need to wait six weeks.
You're going to know that I'm going to put a fence up against my neighbor's fence?
No, I'm saying...
No, you're not going to have a clue.
So he's standing on the sideline. If you already got the backyard, if you're...
If there's a fence in place, and you want to put a fence on your property, you cannot attach the fence to your neighbor's fence without going through a conditional use permit.
Correct. Because the other one's grandfathered in.
Correct. That's what I'm saying, is there, is there a way that, is, would that be an exception to put in? Otherwise, people are just going to go put, you know, if that's the case, they're not going to wait six weeks to put their fence up, they're just going to go attach it right to the neighbors.
Mr. Chair, can we reserve this discussion until after the public hearing?
Sure.
Sounds good.
With that said, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. If either of you gentlemen would like to chime in on our discussion here on fences, you're more than welcome to.
Electric fences allowed? That would solve a lot of this problem.
Not in the city limits, I'm afraid. We've, they're specifically excluded, but a very valid question, sir.
Does he have livestock?
I will go ahead and close the public hearing, though.
Thank you.
Pleasure.
It's point of order.
Oh, yeah. We weren't going to get too far without it.
So I'll open some of the, some additional discussion. I've thought about this for a month now, and I did raise some objection at the last meeting, and even though I am all for limiting the height of fences in the front yard, the point that was made last time is the reason that we have a height limit restriction is for aesthetics. And if we're going to make decisions based on aesthetics, then as a city, we need to do a better job of zoning enforcement, because there's a lot of non-attractive properties, both front yard, side yard, backyard, within the community, and so if we're going to be making decisions based on the aesthetics, then we need to do a better job of enforcement.
What would you recommend on that path?
Well, I mean, that's, that's the trick, right, is what, where do you start that moving forward?
Well, I mean, I'll tell you, our typical process is, we get a complaint about something, or, you know, someone notices it from a staff level, we send out a letter, and a lot of times, that has to have a follow-up letter, and, I mean, oftentimes, when I go out, I do take pictures. I mean, a lot of our, our complaints haven't been fences necessarily, they've been lawn grass, weeds, that sort of thing.
Yeah.
So we send out a couple of letters, and at that point, is where you kind of get to the sticking point, because in some cases, if it's a junk vehicle or something like that, you can get law enforcement involved right away, and they can, if, if they decide that they feel up to it at that time, which isn't always the case, they can start doing citations. You know, it's a misdemeanor, and after that, though, it's, you know, we have one, for example, that's by the aquatic center, that has, most people will be familiar with, with pretty, pretty poor-looking property. It's been poor-looking for apparently many years, and, you know, really, the next step that we're at is that the, the city gets dumpsters, and has city crew go and clean everything off that lot, and put it in garbage, and then charge that back to the property. And that's a step that a lot of cities try not to do. I think I've had to do it four or five times in my career, when you had really bad properties that were just, and in this case, you've got a property that's owner-occupied as well, which is a little bit more difficult than even like a rental situation would be, because a lot of times, you see it with rentals. And, you know, there's, there's a chance you have some kind of lawsuit, probably, but, you know, that is, you know, that's really where you'd go from, from there, you know, and if we want to go in that direction, I mean, that'll be the council that'll instruct us to, to take action at that time, I think.
But, you know, one of the things that precipitated this whole discussion was the six-foot fence, white fence on Manorville Avenue.
Absolutely.
And to me, that's more attractive than the properties that you've referenced.
True.
So if we're talking aesthetics, you know, where do we draw that line?
Yeah, sometimes a fence isn't the worst-looking thing in the world, right?
Yeah, yeah. Part of it, too, though, Dwayne, was, was the whole sightline. The six-foot was...
The six-foot was cutting into your sightline, and that was the reason we-
Not on that particular property, yeah.
No, I thought that was kind of part of the reason we set all front properties.
Yeah.
Would, just to make sure. Plus, it was for a placing-
The 30-inch has probably been on the books for decades. So, you know, if we have the opportunity to review and make a change, and the change is exclusively made on the aesthetics and no other secure reason, you know, possibly security is another reason that we can hang our hat on, you know, for limiting the height. But if we're limited, making decisions solely on aesthetics, I'm, I'm having some difficulty with that. So I'll get off that point. The second point on, bold point number five, where it says, "No fence or wall", and, "Or hedge" is crossed out. Again, we're probably going to split hairs, but what defines a wall? And I would probably add a disclaimer in there, "No living, non-living material", a wall of non-living material.
I think, as far as I know, the definition would be for wall was returning to a retaining wall of some sort. I believe that's what the reference is for.
Yeah, but do we have a definition of that, unlikely?
I would have to look that up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, I mean, it may be clear just to add that disclaimer in there. Okay, I'm done.
I have one under the B, where it says, "An access easement on adjacent property. If you get it with the existing owner and they sell it, do you have to go back and get another permission, easement? Because, or does that sell with the property?"
Well, I mean, I guess that's a good, that's a good question in terms of how are we really defining access easement? Is it really going to be the easement? If it really is an access easement, then it would be recorded with the property, and you wouldn't have to, it would go with the property no matter who owned it.
That would be the intention, yes. But as the conditional use permit itself would be recorded with the property, so would this access agreement. It wouldn't necessarily have to be an easement with actual legal definition defined and everything, but the access agreement to be able to, to access the property, or to access the fence in order to maintain it.
Because I could just see that happening. Well, either one, they have a dispute, or two, they sell it, and then-
Right, and the intention would be that that would then be recorded, so then it would come up on any title work, as, if people are selling and then looking.
And I'm not aware of any easements that disappear upon the sale of the property.
If it's not, uh, contract, if it's not recorded-
Yeah, I mean, we would be recording that, you know, as part of our process, so.
But-
I mean, I do think that's a good point, though, on language.
But it needs to make sure it's with the property.
3B, I mean, if it's not actually an easement, then it should say access agreement instead of access, because to me, there's a difference, like, you might have a joint driveway agreement, it doesn't necessarily mean there's an easement there, so. We can define that better, but I think you'd still, like she said, record the entire CUP, including that document as part of the recording.
Terrifying.
I mean, I beg to say, I, I don't know, I didn't read, follow all the conversation you had last time, does this really solve the problem or not? You know, the problem was, we have a bunch of people putting up fences that are not aesthetically pleasing, they're too high. I do think that this clarifies what would happen with fences on the property line. And there's positives to that, and there's negatives to that. It's a lot more work, but it, it also creates an official, you know, official process where everybody gets notification. And if we think that's worthwhile, then great. If we think it's too much, then, you know, it, there's, like you said, enforcement, probably. You know, when that fence went up on Manorville Avenue, if I had seen it right away, I probably would have gone up there and talked to him at least. Now, I didn't, frankly, until I saw the one across the street being put up, I didn't even really notice it.
Right.
You know, I mean, yeah, it isn't attractive, but, you know, I'm paying attention to traffic. I'm not necessarily looking at properties like I should be, you know, right? And I'm definitely not speeding, ever, on Manorville Avenue.
Much.
But, I mean, it is, I mean, you know, what I would have done is I would have said, "Hey, you guys got to stop, you gotta, this is too high". Now, if they didn't stop, you know, do we want to go and tear it down? Because that's really what we should do. They never came back for their variance, as far as I know.
No.
Right, Linda?
No.
Yeah, what is attractive and what isn't is in the eyes of the beholder, and so it-
That's impossible. I don't think there is an enforcement mechanism for that.
Yeah.
My own two cents, but.
Well, attractive versus too high. I mean, we would argue it's too high.
Yeah.
It's not even, to me, yes, it's not the most attractive, but we would say it's too high. That's the reason that we don't. And their argument's going to come back and say, "Well, we got two big dogs, and we don't want the dogs to jump the fence". My, yeah, that's fair, you know?
Then go for your variance.
Well, and, and I don't disagree with you, I mean, it's one of those ones where, yeah, I mean, the enforcement is, you know, once somebody's got a contractor, they're pouring concrete for puddings, it, it just means that we're going to have more pushback. And, I mean, I'm open to that, it doesn't bother me, but it is good for us to have a process defined, then, probably.
I mean, I think this document is going to help this city, but it's not going to stop people from doing. People are not, I don't know, I have a son that, you know, is looking to put up a fence, and I, I told him, I said, "Well, if you put up your fence, if you put up your fence now", I said, "You can put it on the property line", and he's connecting to some neighbors, and I said, "But there is something in process, but, you know, if you want to connect to your neighbors, you're going to have to get a CU, you know, conditional use". And he's like, "Well, my neighbors already told me I could hook on", and I said, "Well, we'll have to wait for the final language", but, so that's right, I mean, I think it'll give the city some teeth, but I, I think, you know, people are still going to do what they, what they feel is right, which is not always right, you know?
Just to kind of think through this process a little bit, what's the reason for why a conditional use permit for this would be denied? Someone comes in and asks if they want to put the fence on, on the property line, one neighbor says, "No", the other neighbor says, "Yes".
That would be the reason, right, Terry, yeah.
So as long as, as long as there, if there's not an agreement-
I mean, I think that would be the biggest reason that the city council would officially deny something, is if one or more neighbors came and said, "I absolutely oppose this, I think it's, it diminishes the value of my property". At that point, you're infringing in your neighbor's property right, and that's probably why. I mean, I can't think of another reason, usually, that's typically it.
Yeah.
But when we dealt with that house issue earlier this year, it was a bad situation, really. If either one of the neighbors on the east or the west would have said, "Absolutely not", I think the city council definitely would have had some more, even more hesitation. I mean, they denied it once, they might have just said, "No", you know, and, and that's my, my stance, I suppose.
I would say, however, that with that denial, the property owner still is able to put a fence within the three feet. So it's not like they're not allowed to have a fence at all.
They just wouldn't be able to have it on the property line, right, exactly. They just would have to go back and say, "No, I can't do it".
And the other one, too, on that, is if they didn't realize they had a drainage easement, utility easement, and didn't, that would be another reason to deny it. Because you can't put it on an easement.
Well, yeah, I think you can, but you have to, it's at your own risk.
Well, yeah.
Anytime in the future, because we're dealing with that one, one of those down in South Fork, where there's some, some swales and drainage ways and things like that, but, yeah. It's always at your own risk.
Well, but in, in a drainage easement, I think you can't put anything in there because it's going to restrict the flow of the drainage. If it's a water flow, because we're telling, the city was telling people out along Maston Creek, they couldn't have their sheds in their backyard because it was in the easement.
But that wasn't their property, was it?
Yeah, I don't think that was their property, and also, I think that that's zoned flood fringe, which doesn't allow for sheds. It allows for task courts, I've been told several times. So people always bring that point up, "Well, if I want to build a task court, but I can't build a shed", well, go for it, put your task court in your backyard, that's fine with me, you know?
Is it a perfect document? No, it's not a perfect document, but I don't think the zoning code is a perfect document for whatever that's worth. I think it's plain language that anybody can understand, strikes me as relatively easy to manage, relatively easy to communicate things to the people at large. If the Adams family moves in next door and wants to put in a 10-foot wrought iron fence right on my property line, I, as a property owner, do have recourse in that matter, and forgive me, I was exaggerating just to prove the point.
Right.
I'm still worried about the folks on 57, because they've got those two big dogs. But regardless of looking at the current language or what we're proposing, I think they were in violation either way. So I don't think we're exasperating an existing issue.
We don't have in here that it can't be placed on an easement? Oh, yes, it does.
It encourages communication among neighbors, almost forces it on some levels.
Yeah.
You'll get some, some people that are going to have an issue writing out the check for the conditional use permit. I, I don't know if there's a way around that, to be quite honest with you.
Public, I mean, it pays for publication, and it's the biggest thing. We publish in the newspaper, and we send out newsletters.
I perceive it's a step in the right direction, if not perhaps a final destination, or we're walking down the right path.
I think anytime you can have transparency is, it's important. Especially when it's still a government issue. You want transparency for the resident.
It's transparency, it's communication, it's easy to maintain. I don't think it creates an unnecessary burden on any aspect of this community.
Right.
I would be hard-pressed to sit here and beat it up and tear it apart, trying to find on some, some outlier issue. But my own two cents. For what it's worth. Any other thoughts? No, gentleman, Sheldon? If not, I would look for a motion from someone, please.
I'll make a motion. Approve as is.
We have a motion to approve as is?
Is it possible to just have that one word changed, the, from easement to agreement? Maybe just with that change, Joe?
Yeah, I'll, so I'll make that motion to approve the document with the change of the wording on, I believe it's number three, to access easement, to access agreement. Is that what you're going to report, Jim?
That's right. Just so it's clear.
Either, both, one?
I would say just agreement.
Just agreement?
Yeah.
Okay. So we do have a motion, was said amendment to the wording on 3B, or pardon me, B3. Did I say that right?
No, you're right.
3B.
3B, okay, forgive me.
Do you want to change the wording in five or six to add the, of non-living material?
The definition of wall?
Definition of wall of non-living material.
Well, I guess we're going to find out if it's actual, what we have in the, as, do we have that? Can you look up what we have for definition?
It's probably unlikely we even have a definition for that, do we?
I don't, I don't know, off the top of my head, I'm unfortunately not connected to the internet right now, but, um-
I got the definitions right here.
If we've got wall on there, I mean, that's got to be like-
Yeah, I'd be really surprised.
Win a prize here, I mean, it's like, what was that game show where you had to have stuff in like your pocket or a pen or?
I'd be really surprised.
Boat hangers.
Be careful, it could be a three-page definition for wall.
But if, if you'd like to make your motion to address, just sort of the wording to generally address wall, either in definitions or within the wording of the fence ordinance itself, we can-
I guess, what's the intent of having the two different words between fence and wall? What, I mean, are we-
Wall, I think, refers to retaining walls.
Okay.
And fence is more like a freestanding fence structure.
Fence, I see something that's with individual boards or pickets of some kind in a wall or something nationally. When have you ever seen a retaining wall in somebody's front yard? I mean, if you think about that entire sense, no portion of a fence or wall projecting into the front yard of a property.
You do have landscaping on the side and front of some properties, but-
Yeah, I guess I'm trying to think, it's pretty-
It could have like a, a small wall that blocks headlights, for instance, at a, at a commercial property, something like that, so, you know.
Stone pillars on the side of your driveway, which somebody might say is a wall.
Oh, okay. My own ignorance in that case.
But we're digging deep to find something for you, though.
Yeah. I assume we don't have a formal definition of wall?
We do not have a formal definition of wall or hedge.
I will, I will amend that motion to add to the, no, let's see, to all areas where it's got reference to walls, to include that to be non-living material.
We do have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? That would be our recommendation, sir.
All right.
Well, that goes to city council, is that Wednesday?
I think, we'll just have to see what they do with it. It may actually make more sense for us just to add a definition for wall into the city code, just so, you know, in the future. When I looked up wall, it says, "A continuous vertical brick or stone structure that encloses or divides the area of land", I think that's probably how most people interpret it, but, well, we'll make it work. I think we understand that what we're, we understand what we're talking about here, so.
We've got a few updates, the first on Plaza 57 Coffee?
Want to talk about it, or do you want me to? Or do you want to, Laura?
I can touch on it.
Yeah, I mean, basically, we've just-
You're not the last last.
Yeah, right, this has gone through a couple of different iterations. So, you know, it's kind of come around, and I think we're back to sort of a very basic idea behind this, that, I don't know if you guys, how much you talked about it at the last meeting or not, but-
So just to update you all, at the last meeting, we showed a preliminary site plan of a drive-through coffee stand at the Plaza 57 through the parking lot. Things have shifted a little bit since then. First of all, my reading of the zoning ordinance was incorrect, and it's actually not a conditional use permit in the B or the C2. It is permitted with standards to have a drive-through. So you all won't actually be reviewing this application anymore. So we will be, we are doing an internal review on that administratively. The standards for the, or the drive-throughs still remain the same. They still have to meet the same qualifications, it just means there doesn't need to be a public hearing, notice, et cetera. With all of that, it, a few items have changed with the layout. The coffee stand itself is actually a mobile truck that won't be permanently on the site. However, because they are intending to have a drive-through lane serving that truck, the drive-through itself is what triggers the use on the property, and thus the review by city staff. We are working with them on a circulation plan right now to make sure that there's no points of conflict between circulating traffic and pedestrians coming up to that truck or other food trucks that might be in the area. So we did receive word from MINDOT that they don't see an issue currently with what's being proposed, and we're just waiting on some final circulation plans to kind of get everything going.
Wonderful. We also have an update on transportation map, or is that still evolving a little bit?
Well, it's always evolving, fascinatingly enough.
Are, are you comfortable talking about it at this stage?
No, I don't have an update necessarily on that, because I, I guess I was not necessarily in the office for all the conversations that were had on that. I do know that Brandon had circulated some information, Dwayne, you've got a copy of it there. I haven't actually seen that myself yet, so I'm not sure what else that was going to entail, Linda.
No, they just asked not to, because I think Brandon had some more issues that he wanted to talk to Dwayne and Laura about.
I think that Brandon wanted to make a more finalized version, Dwayne, of the one that he-
He wasn't quite ready to bring back to everybody.
Well, I guess that's the update, it's not quite ready to bring back to you, so don't worry about it this month, and we'll be all right.
Trying to give you an ele-
I think basically the gist of it is there, you know, a lot of the feedback we took was good, and it's very helpful to us, and we can incorporate some of the previous planning and zoning that was, was prepared even 20 years ago, fascinatingly, to take some of those, we're almost back to where those were. So we'll have something hopefully better next for you, next month.
Other, do you have any other?
No.
We have a potential development project in the old school, is that something that can be discussed here?
Sure, I can talk about, a little bit about that. Mr. Paul Worschauer, I think his name is, he's a gentleman who's going to be at the city council meeting on Wednesday. He, that project has been ongoing. He, that project has been ongoing over the last ten years, they've had different proposals, people have come to, but I, I do know that he has a purchase agreement in for the building.
Okay.
Working with the care folks and with the other shareholders of that LLC, I think they have, or LLP or something, whatever it is. He's looking at a independent living style, at least in the current iteration, it's independent living fifty-five plus. Now, does that mean it's stuck in stone? No, not at all. In fact, the number of units that I was told by him is different from what was reported in the newspaper. So, you know, which doesn't surprise me, because we had another developer looking at it earlier this year, who said they thought that they needed a certain number of units to make it cash flow, and so, when, you know, I was told a lower number by Mr. Warschauer, it seemed unlikely to be, you know, accurate, because obviously, they have to make it work somehow. But that's the project he's looking at, he's coming to council, I suspect that he'll be looking for tax subsidies, which, this would be a good project for that, frankly, because that, you know, it's not going anywhere fast otherwise, so, if, if it's actually realistic. He did have a development project, he did New Ulm, he's done a number of development projects, but that's the most localized one, where they took a housing project and, they took an old school, and they were able to, you know, put some apartments in it. Those units were, per, per unit were quite expensive, but they had a lot of subsidies from the VA, because they had a veteran component to it, so that's what kind of made that project work. But I think the way he, he does this is he brings investors in, and there's some sort of rate of return on projects that he, you know, sets up, and then, you know, they invest in it, and they do the project. So, looking forward to having a good discussion with him on Wednesday, and seeing what he has to offer, and seems like a, a very competent salesman, and he's got some really good posts to him, so, I have not met in person myself, but...
Well, that building's currently zoned RC, isn't it?
Hmm, I don't think so.
I would have to double-check that.
But I can look quick.
I think I'm right.
Find out real fast.
I'm trying to remember.
I thought it was like R three maybe, or something like that, but, see what's the school zone.
I think it's RC, it's in the pink.
Forgive my memory, assuming it is RC, what is the maximum number of units he can put in, when it's in zoning?
I'd have to check on that.
Okay. As long as he's aware of that.
Yeah. I can definitely bring some more information back after I receive it from him this week, hopefully, so...
Stick my nose in the door on Wednesday?
Well, I'm sure you'll get some feedback when you get home.
Uh, yeah.
Don't worry about that.
You have a message.
I, I think I already have three messages from someone you know.
Really?
In my inbox, tonight, so, there you go, yes. So it's very interested parties in that neighborhood, obviously, but...
Oh, yeah.
But that's not a bad thing, it's, it's, I'm hoping that we, something can come out of it, because obviously, that's been a sore spot for different folks in town here for a while, and if we can solve that, that's, that's just a positive, so...
Be a CUP, multifamily, twenty-five to twenty-four units in an RC would be a CUP. Twenty-five plus would still be a CUP.
So they need a conditional use permit, so...
Unless he's doing four units.
Right, unless it would just be, yeah, which, yeah, so he'd need a CUP.
Yep.
So you get, you might get a chance to review it, lucky guy.
Don't have a choice.
You could be on vacation that week.
It doesn't work that way?
No, not right.
You're married.
Fair enough.
Does anybody else have anything they'd like to share? If not, I will adjourn the meeting, thank you all for coming.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Rob?
One of these days, I'll get it right.
No, you know, it's all right.